I would now like to call our September 9, 2024 Alexander County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order. At this time, I will lead the invocation, and following the invocation, Commissioner Marty Pennell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you are able, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this wonderful weather we've been experiencing. Dear God, be with us during this meeting. Help us to make decisions that will improve Alexander County, improve the life of Alexander County's residents, and move this county forward. Dear Heavenly Father, please put a special hedge of protection around our emergency services personnel, our police, sheriff's department, fire departments, EMS, and rescue squad. Dear God, help keep those men and women safe as they protect us each day. Heavenly Father, thank you for every person that's come to this gathering. Give us all safe travels home. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you would, please remain standing and direct your attention to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is commissioners' reports. Gentlemen, does anyone have anything they would like to report?
I'd just like to say we attended, Chairman Lael and myself was able to attend the dedication of the football field out at ACHS other Friday night. Nice field. It's softer than carpet in a lot of people's house. Really looks good. If anyone hadn't seen it, it's worth the time to see. Everything's not completely done. The track's still waiting to be done. And I just want to kind of give a shout out, too, to our Senator Eddie Settle, who the one who retained the money that was used for that, really for the gym at Sugarloaf, ball field at ACHS, and the tennis courts. And a lot of times, Alexander County gets passed over with money that's actually all of ours money, but I like to see when it's used wisely in our county. And we can thank them for it. And it was a good night. Football team won. That was the last home game. I think they played away in Statesfield Saturday and won that one, too. Just wanted to give them a shout out.
That was a nice event. I had the pleasure of working in one of the concession stands, but did take a break long enough to participate at halftime. It was my first stint in the concession stand, and I thought I had been promoted to making popcorn, but then I realized that that's the hottest place you can possibly be in a concession stand. And I just wasn't smart enough to know that everybody else had duped me. But if you had popcorn Friday night's ballgame, at least out of one of the concession stands, I hope it was okay. Anybody else?
Bring attention that we do have some county events taking place in the next couple of months, especially at the Alexander County Courthouse Park. And then also, we've got some fall festivals that are occurring here in the next little bit in the Taylorsville area and the Hidnott area.
I'd just like to say it's good to see everybody coming out tonight. Usually, we're talking to an empty room. Yet it's good for people to be involved, keep up with what's going on. We have nothing to hide. We're as transparent as can be. Things are public record, so I appreciate everyone coming.
Anybody else? All right. Moving right along, gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. There is one item that needs to be added to the consent agenda. And gentlemen, you have all been given this information prior to the meeting pertaining to the needs-based Public School Capital Fund grant application that would provide new HVAC at West Middle School. So that is just to be added to the consent agenda when we do get there. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as given.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We do have a couple of folks that have signed up for public comment. I would just, I'll say standard procedure. I will read the rules set forth by the state of North Carolina for public comment. We are required at each and every regular monthly meeting to set aside 15 minutes for public comment. And I think we know why most of you guys are here, based on a lot of emails and phone calls and over the past couple of weeks. And we do, well, like Mr. Reese said, we honestly appreciate you being here to participate in the political process. A lot of times, we feel like nobody's watching, nobody's listening, nobody's paying attention. And that's not the way we want it to be, but sadly, that is the truth sometimes. The actual public hearing pertaining to the rezoning request, it's a rezoning request, right? And just to tell you that I'm, the actual hearing pertaining to the rezoning request for the piece of property on Rankdam Road in Bowman Court is scheduled for our regular October meeting, which is October 7. We do have one public hearing pertaining to zoning tonight, but it's pertaining to a different piece and different folks. And just to let everybody know, we didn't pull a fast one and try to change it or anything like that because it's been scheduled. That public hearing's been scheduled since August the 8th, when it was passed or when the zoning board had their public hearing. The only other thing that I'm going to say, and this is kind of a personal thing, before I read the public comments, public comments rules. I've been at this long enough to have pretty thick skin. I understand that the decisions that we make and have to make will not always make everybody 100% happy, never makes every, well, the decisions we make never make everyone happy. We try to do the best we can with the information that we have, and in this situation, we will do the exact same. Like Mr. Reese mentioned, everything we do is public record. Every meeting we have is open. Anytime three or more of us are together intentionally, we are required to give public notice because that constitutes a quorum, because we are a five-member board. Yeah, and the fact that we're elected by, we're elected by the citizens of Alexander County, our job is to represent the citizens of Alexander County, and we want those folks and all 38,000 roughly of those people. We want every single one to feel like they're represented. The personal part of this, and part of it is political, but there's quite a bit of false information on social media. Some of it could actually be taken personally. When my middle school, when my middle school son comes home and makes a comment about something somebody said to him at school, I start to take it personally. And to set the record straight, and I'm trying not to lose my stuff, set the record straight, I nor any member of this board have anything to do with the company or anybody else involved with this project. There's all kinds of information on social media saying that some of us are getting rich, that we're making dirty money. I'll gladly show you what we're paid for what we do. And yes, we have to have real jobs. And anybody that knows me knows I work a lot. And I've been pretty dang successful. And I'm not ashamed of that. I didn't inherit anything. But to say that I'm making money under the table and I'm in cahoots, get over it. Act like adults. I'm going to. And I don't mean to get on my soapbox, but to tell you the first time I saw the map of that subdivision was on Facebook, to tell you how involved we are in the process, because And slander and libel are legitimate things. And if you come after me, and I think these other gentlemen are the same way, if you come after me, don't be surprised if it comes back at you. Now, I'm not going to be petty and do it on Facebook, or Instagram, or Twitter, or any of the other wonderful ways that we communicate with people these days. But like I say, I hadn't had a problem until my son came home this afternoon, when I was running home to change my clothes because I'd been at work to come here. So that being said, we will be completely respectful of any and all opinions. One thing that being a county commissioner has taught me is everybody has an opinion, and they're typically not the same. And that is, and one of the wonderful things about America is we can all disagree, and when it's all said and done, we can shake hands and agree to disagree. And that's, we do that quite often. So moving into public comment, Alexander County Board of Commissioners, public comment September 9, 2024. Reading glasses on. Public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' complaints, excuse me, comments and concerns.
Complaints.
You can throw some complaints in there if you want to. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting of each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select a spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff, will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff, and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizen wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. And one thing that I was going to do is if someone has a question, or if someone would like to sign up for public comment, the correct phone number to do that is the administration office's primary number, that number, and not saying that folks did call the wrong place, that's not what I'm implying, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows how you can do this. Phone number's 828-632-9332. And the clerk to the Board is Ms. Jamie Starnes, and she is who they will direct you to, or you can ask for, to ask to be put on the list for public comment at any point pertaining to any topic. First person on the list for public comment is Doug Peeler. If you would, just for, I'll say, communication purposes, if you'd come to the podium, state your name, and we're here to listen.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lael. Commissioners, appreciate you letting me talk for just a couple of minutes. My name's Doug Peeler. My wife Connie and I have lived at 674 Bowman Court for 22 years now. Before that, we were at, for 20 years, we were in, at Deloitte Track Road, right off Deloitte Track Road. So we've been in this community for about 44 years. We've gone to church here in this community. We've, kids have gone to school at AC, or my daughter did at AC. I've worked for Mr. Bach at Ace Hardware for a little bit, so we have very deep ties to this community. What really keeps us, I guess, what keeps us stay in this community is the community It's just a small town, small community that's got the word Bethlehem to it, and it's just something that over the years, we've seen expand, and it's still okay. But just have a couple of concerns and just make a couple of comments here, and then I'll be done. The first comment I want to make is, and Mr. Lael, you addressed it, is that there's just a whole lot of information out there that I know are rumors, no doubt about it. But I had a hard time finding this information when I first found out about this development that's going on. And of course, not being on Facebook and all that, I'm not going to get the social media part of it.
Good for you.
The Lord told me not to do that many years ago, and I think it's been a wise decision. But it was just difficult to find out what exactly was going on because we don't, we don't get the Taylorsville Times and all that stuff. So anyway, all that being said, our one, my one subject to talk about is, and going into the future, if there's a way that not only the U. Commissioners, but as, maybe as a developer, and maybe whoever else is involved in this.
Got 15 seconds, sorry.
That's what?
Got 15 seconds.
15 seconds?
Yep.
All right. Another thing I want to do is more information, if possible, and secondly, any decisions that you folks make, if you will be in prayer about that, and just seek the Holy Spirit, listen to the Holy Spirit on that, and I think everything will work out. Thank you for allowing me to address the commissioners. Mr. Lael, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we have, Ms. Taylor, you, I was like, we're doing.
Yeah, they've both signed up for a spot, but he's going to take both spots.
Okay. Ms. Taylor. Don Taylor, if you would please officially state your name and.
Don Taylor, that's my wife Marie Taylor, and we live in Bethlehem also. And I know we only have six minutes. I'm going to run through this pretty quick. We've talked to over 300 residents, and these are just some community concerns that we have, and we want to make sure that the facts are out there because the facts are the only thing that are going to drive this process. Some of the concerns are high-density zoning changes that were just passed in May from the land development codes, three large developments that are currently under consideration, make sure that we're adhering to new zoning laws just passed in May, also adhering to new Duke Power Lake zoning laws for the edges, changes that Alexander County may be requiring on local roads, traffic on Rankdam Road, construction impact to local residents, lot tree clearing, sewer pump stations, which we found out about, and water connections. And Bethlehem residents, just to be clear, want to maintain our current community character. Again, just to be sure, we're not against new housing. What we are against is high-density housing. 495 homes in the Espeland development. We've got an additional 128 homes at the Wittenberg Access, which has proposed five-foot setbacks, at least in accordance to the application. Town Creek Real Estate has another 98 homes. That's 720 new homes in a one-and-a-quarter-mile section of Rankdam Road. Question is, how many more proposed developments are out there, and how do Bethlehem residents find out? The Bethlehem rezoning that was just approved in May of 2024, Amy confirmed that the official version is on the website. However, the majority of Bethlehem is zoned R1, which the front right-of-way is local, it's 15 feet, and a collector road is 20 feet. Since zoning was just passed, there should be any, should be no reason for deviations from new zoning, side, rear, or local in front. At least checking on the GIS, roads in our community have 60-foot easements. 60-foot roads in R1 mean a 45-foot setback from the center line, which is a minimum 37 feet from the edge of the road, which we'd like to maintain to maintain our community standard. Because if you look at what's happening over in Hickory right now, they've got less than 20-foot driveways. That's a planned development in Hickory. The large pickup trucks will hang out. Street parking is going to be accidents waiting to happen in our little community. Land Development Code side setbacks, 154.88, Section G. The reviewing agency should take into consideration both public safety concerns as well as community character when applying standards. R1 zoning has 10-foot side setbacks. R15, R20, which we had previously, had 15-foot side setbacks. That's our current community standard and current character. If we at least adhere to 10-foot setbacks, it's a compromise to community character. And again, they were just passed. Five-foot setbacks are too small for our community. If you look at some recent construction in Bethlehem on the left-hand side and compare to what they're proposing in Bethlehem on the right-hand side, five-foot setbacks, we have plenty of land. We don't need to jam all these houses that close together to ruin the character and feel of our current community. Rankdam and local traffic impact. Local traffic at just one development, if you look on the lower left-hand side where it says Bowman Court, down at that lower section, we have 28 houses. We're adding another 33 houses. If you go at Twins Cove Road where we have eight houses, we're adding another 100 houses feeding into Twins Cove Road. Go up to the top of Bowman Court in the upper left, you've got 10 houses adding another 300-plus houses, all feeding out to Rankdam Road and on those three little local roads. 46 homes going to 541. Note, same roads, no planned improvements. This in turn will have a greater than 50% increase in traffic on Rankdam. At least according to the GIS, we have roughly 1,525 homes which feed into Rankdam Road going out to 127. That's 700, greater than 721 new homes in two miles of Rankdam. Construction impact to our local residents, residential impact. Multiple housing projects, road construction, infrastructure projects, all at one time. 721-plus new homes, the 127 widening project, sewer pump station and upgrades for new construction only is what a lot of the citizens are asking. New water tower and upgrades. Maybe we can just slow it down just a little bit so we can space it out, but right now, we're going to have 10 years of misery for Bethlehem if all of these get done at the same time. Residents are also concerned about tree clearing and timing and lot preparation. If you look at what Espeland Day is doing in the North Gate in Charlotte, they cleared those lots in 2020. 2024, they're halfway done. In our area, which are on a little hillier, we're concerned about water runoff, erosion plans, mud in the lake water. Most of these communities are on well water. So what can we do to mitigate these issues? The water and sewer pump station, the new Bowman Court location at the top of contributory stream for Lake Hickory. How is the location determined? Is environmental study for that location complete? And is it available to the public? And how do we get it? Is county-funded sewer and water expansion available for county residents adjacent to utilities or just new construction? Again, just trying to figure out the facts and where to find the information. Who is paying for all the expansion costs and new water tower? And if taxpayer-funded upgrades should be available to all residents in the Bethlehem area? Some additional concerns you'll be hearing about in the future. Bethlehem residents feel left out of the conversations. 2023 input surveys were not received by greater than 300 residents as polled on Facebook. How will residents be kept apprised of both the DOT, EPA, EIS, environmental impact studies and other surveys to be completed? What are the next steps? What are the projects in the pipeline?
15 seconds, sir.
Okay. Oh, 15 seconds. What other projects are in the pipeline? Again, Bethlehem residents just want to maintain our community character and try to keep it as looking like our community as possible without putting in extra high-density zoning. Thank you so much. I disagree with any of those comments that you're talking about, and most of us do. If people are slandering people, that's something that we don't appreciate and don't condone.
And we understand that completely.
You need a bigger room. You've got a lot of people out here that can't have any response to what you're saying. In all fairness, I respect you to have a different room. You need to have a bigger room.
Can we get a count of people outside?
Well, the need for a bigger room. I think it's pretty obvious that in Alexander County, we are, we're not oozing with money, and we're not wasteful, given the fact that we meet in the CBCC Center and don't even have our own room. I was not saying that we, not saying that there might not be another venue.
I'm sorry. We just want to make sure you get a strong feeling of how many people feel this strongly about it. That's all. Yes, sir. It's not slamming against you or anything.
Sir, I understand. And, you know, I live off Rankdam Road. And if you want to talk about deep roots in Bethlehem, I probably got quite a few of you beat.
You got it. Respect on the, you represent, have you one of us up here also?
Absolutely, absolutely, sir. I do. I mean, and I'm not trying to be, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult at all.
I wish, I wish we had the quality we're able to.
Sir, I'll say we have public comment per North Carolina general statute, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but like I say, there's another, there is a public hearing next month, October 7. During the public hearing, anyone in attendance can speak. With that, we will move on. To those of you that spoke, thank you very much. We appreciate the information. It's obvious that you guys have put in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and we appreciate And if we, good point. That's why Ms. Starnes is actually the boss. She keeps us straight. If there is an issue next month with space for the public hearing, and we, you know, there are folks that want to speak and cannot make, can't get in the room due to fire code, we can switch people in and out to allow everyone the opportunity to speak.
Is it here, like, that's what it is here?
Yes, sir.
Do we want to make a high school gym perhaps, or a elementary gym, so you can accommodate, you know, more things, more. you know, more people, like, I mean, those are public things, right?
We can, we can look into that, absolutely.
How would you go to buy them?
They're in Bethlehem where we live.
That'll be us.
This...
You ask for that? Right. And it's like all the Charles people are public, so.
Sir, sir, I, sir, I understand and I appreciate it, but this is, this is a meeting, and we have one these every single month.
Oh, I got you.
Okay? And we devote a lot of our time to the, to, to things other than just what affects Bethlehem, just what affects my neighborhood.
I understand.
And we have a process that we have followed, and we appreciate those of you that have followed the process. If you're not following the process, you're not gonna speak. That's the rule. That's not my rule, that's the rule. Okay? Moving on to the next item on our agenda, uh, which I need to flip my pad back on. Next item, item number seven, is public, public hearing pertaining to 5310 Public Transportation Grant Program Grant. I would recognize David Moose, our Consolidated Human Services Director. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing for Public Transportation Program Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, and we are now in, in a public hearing pertaining to 5310 Public Transportation Program Grant. Please.
All right, may I present the resolution now, or close the public hearing first?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay. So this is a resolution for the Public Transportation Program, also known as the NC DOT 5310. This is, just for background, an annual grant opportunity that is, the funding is applied for and administered through, by the county through the Department of Social Services. So we do have a FY26 resolution, I'll read it out loud now. It says, whereas Article 2B of Chapter 136 of the North Carolina General Statutes and the Governor of North Carolina have designated the North Carolina Department of Transportation as the agency responsible for administering federal and state public transportation funds, and whereas North Carolina Department of Transportation will apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, and receives funds from the North Carolina General Assembly to provide assistance for rural public transportation projects, and whereas the purpose of these transportation funds is to provide grant monies to local agencies for the provision of rural, small, urban, and urban public transportation services, consistent with the policy requirements of each funding source for planning, community, excuse me, community and agency involvement, service design, service alternatives, training and conference participation, reporting and other requirements such as drug and alcohol testing policy and program, disadvantaged business enterprise programs, and fully allocated cost analysis, and whereas the funds applied for may be administrative, operating, planning, or capital funds, and will have different percentages of federal, state, and local funds. Whereas non-community transportation applicants may apply for funding for purchase of service projects under the Capital Purchase of Service Budget, Section 5310 program, whereas Alexander County Department of Social Services hereby assures and certifies that it will provide the required local match fundings, that its staff has the technical capacity to implement and manage the projects, prepare required reports, obtain required training, attend meetings and conferences, and agrees to comply with the federal and state statutes, regulations, executive orders, Section 5333B warranty, and all administrative requirements related to the applications made to and grants received from the Federal Transit Administration, as well as the provisions of Section 1001 of Title 18 U.S. Code, whereas the applicant has or will provide all annual certifications and assurances to the state of North Carolina required for the project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chairman of Alexander County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to submit grant applications for federal and state funding in response to NC DOT's calls for projects, make the necessary assurances and certifications, and empower, empower to enter into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to provide rural, small, urban, and urban public transportation services. Staff's recommendation is that we adopt the resolution.
This is a public hearing, if anyone has anything they would like to say pertaining to the Transportation Program Grant?
What was his recommendation?
Recommendation is that we adopt the resolution.
So you're for it?
That is correct.
David, can you explain exactly what the resolution is? They may have not heard you.
So the resolution is to authorize the county to apply for grant funds for transportation programs administered by the Department of Social Services. I'm sorry?
A bus or like Greenway?
Yes, we contract through Greenway.
But the total request is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four, is that correct?
Correct.
This is something that we usually do every year.
Yeah, it's an annual application.
To keep that service going for the county.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That you dedicate it then to Alexander County?
Yes, that's to provide services in Alexander County.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Yes, sir.
You're asking about ridership?
Yeah.
That would be a question we'd have to direct to the Greenway. I don't have that data for me, I'm sorry.
I, I do know, I mean, my only, my only experience with the Greenway transportation, when my grandfather was in his late, late life when he was ailing, um, Greenway through, I'll say Greenway and through Department of Social Services and such, um, he did receive transportation to like a day program for Alzheimer's and such, and I think, I think it cost like two dollars a day for them to take him to, you know, to the program that he went to during the day. And, you know, obviously, that's not the only, you know, that's not the only thing it's used for, but, um, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the Greenway transportation use is, um, is, you know, is to benefit, um, what's the term?
Uh, like...
I don't wanna say needy, because that's not...
Yeah, low-income, yeah, underserved.
Underserved is a good, good word, yeah.
It bridges the transportation gap.
Right, it, it, that's a good way to say it, it bridges the transportation gap.
My comment is not, is that the...
Right.
It's one of those things that I think is a good thing, that as we, if we only hear the bad, we don't get to appreciate what's done in the county.
Yes, I apologize, I don't have that data for you. Yeah, it's, it's available through Greenway there.
Is this a demand or are we projected to have a lot of new people in the county?
This is an annual recurring program that serves the citizens of Alexander County. This is not in response to anything changing, if that, if that's what your question, if I understood your question, yeah.
Yeah, the, and maybe for clarification purposes, uh, we, we receive, we have, you know, we receive grant, this grant funding now and have in the past, this is simply to, to allow us to ask for it again, you know, so it's, it's to continue, you know, it's to continue a program that's already in place.
Yeah, it's more of a procedural requirement of the federal government for us to apply annually for the grant funding.
Anyone, anyone else? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, do we have a motion of action?
Make a motion, we approve 5310 Public Transportation Program Grant.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Transportation Program Grant. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And let me get back out to where I can see. Come on. Technology's great, but it's also...
When it works.
Yeah, technology's great when it works. Uh, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, rezoning case 24-05 H.E. Estates LLC. I would recognize Amy Bucknum, Alexander County Planning. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing for rezoning case 24-05 H&amp;E Estates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, we are now in, now in a public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Laio, Commissioners. Brittany and Dylan Sweet with H&amp;E Estates LLC petition for rezoning. They wish to rezone 1.79 acres at 2280 Old Landfield Road, Taylorsville, from a residential District Two to a residential District Two rural. In reviewing the recommendations, we have to look at consistency with the comprehensive plan, and if you look at the future land use map, not that, that one right there, that area where, where it is, is in the rural transition area, the RTA, so R2R zoning and R2 are both appropriate, considered appropriate for that area, that transitional zoning area. Also, the previous zoning district shows, so basically that tan around that area is R2R, so it's adjacent, it's in that area, so it's appropriate. Regarding unique things to this property, it is in the watershed, it's a predominantly residential area, I believe there's a single Y on it now, the R2R zoning allows for a single Y development, which is the purpose of the request, to rezone. Any development, anything that, that goes on there has to meet all of the regular zoning standards, building requirements, any of our design elements as well, and our density requirements, so the maximum density on that parcel, I think it's three units, so that's, that's it. It did go before the planning board, and the planning board and staff recommend approving the rezoning. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. This being a public hearing, does anyone have any questions pertaining to rezoning If not, yes, ma'am, would, would you, and I'm, and I was told to say this, would you go to the podium just so, because we are, we are on the radio, believe it or not?
Oh, yeah. Hi out there, radio audience, this is Marie.
And with that being said, um, they can't hear you guys unless you're talking to the microphone.
Okay, no problem. So that, what I, I'm, I wanna make sure that I understand it, so we're talking about taking this property from one house on it to three? Or is it gonna be something else?
No, they're just changing the, they're changing the zoning district, the maximum that they could, they could put on there currently would be three, if they, if they chose to divide it.
Would be three. Three residential, though, since it's in a residential area, not changing it to put a commercial something on it?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and it's 1.87 acres?
1.79 acres.
1.79, with, so three would be the maximum, single-family homes that could go on that property?
Which is the same that it is now, like, it, that density isn't changing with the R2R.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Just a little clarification, I'm not a zoning expert, but the way things are zoned, if it's residential, commercial, highway, commercial, industrial, there's all kinds of things that have to adhere to that, I think I'm speaking correct, Amy, is that right? So each one has to meet those requirements for that type of zone.
Yeah, I know way more about this than I ever did a month ago.
All right. Anyone else? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Gentlemen, do we have a, I'll say, I'll make a motion to approve zoning change request from my computer or my lap, my thingy again. How do I get back? Dang it. Believe that shuts it out. I just gotta go. Where's that? Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve rezoning case 24-05 H&amp;E Estates LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, this is a good one, number nine, resolution supporting multi-campus funding for CBCC Alexander Center. I would recognize Commissioner Marty Pennell.
I'd like to recognize Dr. Henshaw, did any other members come in? No. We currently have in the attendance tonight, Dr. Henshaw, President of CBCC, Randy Burns, Director of Economic Development, or is that correct? And then we got John Watts, Board of Trustees. Resolution, I'm getting ready to read it, and this is in regards to designating as a multi-campus center in Alexander County. Resolution in support of granting multi-campus center funding to CVC's Alexander Campus, whereas Catawba Valley Community College, CBCC, has been a cornerstone of higher education and workforce, workforce development in our region, providing invaluable educational opportunities to residents of Alexander County and beyond, and whereas the Alexander Campus of CBCC has shown consistent growth in student enrollment, program offerings, and community engagement, serving as a vital resource for local students seeking accessible, high-quality education close to home, and whereas the attainment of multi-campus center status for the Alexander County Campus will enhance its ability to receive critical funding, expand its educational programs, improve facilities, and further integrate with the needs of the local community and economy. And whereas multi-campus center funding will support the continued development of specialized programs, workforce training initiatives, and partnerships with local businesses and industries, thereby contributing to the economic growth and competitiveness of Alexander County. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners recognize the critical role that education plays in fostering a skilled workforce, reducing unemployment, and improving the overall quality of life for our residents, and whereas the community has expressed strong support for the expansion and enhancement of educational opportunities provided by CBCC's Alexander Campus, reflecting the shared vision of a prosperous and educated populace. Now therefore be it resolved by the Alexander County Board of Commissioners that the Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its full unequivocal support for granting multi-campus center funding to Catawba Valley Community Colleges, Colleges Alexander Campus. Number two, the Board of Commissioners respectfully requests the North Carolina Community College System and other relevant authorities to recognize the merits of this request and to take all necessary steps to approve and facilitate the designation of multi-campus center for the CVC Alexander Campus. Number three, the Board of Commissioners commits to continuing its support and collaboration with CBCC to ensure the... to ensure the successful implementation and ongoing success of the Alexander Campus as a multi-campus institute. Be it further resolved, that copies of this resolution be transmitted to Senator Eddie Settle, Representative Jeffrey Elmore, North Carolina State Board of Community Colleges. North Carolina Community College System, President Dr. Jeff Cox and CBCC, President Dr. Garrett Henshaw adopted this night, day of September twenty twenty-four, by our chairman, if approved.
Thank you, sir. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve resolution supportive granting multi-campus center funding to CBCC's Alexander Campus.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I'd like to make a comment in regards to our CBCC campus and partnerships. It's highly appreciated that CBCC continues to support in this area, be involved with kids regularly and throughout the community. Our trades are extremely vital. Alexander County, there's a, there's a good portion, I should say, of Alexander County kids that, that benefit from this program and others that do as well. And I am absolutely happy that we could possibly, you know, have the multi-campus designation here. And of course, any funding that comes in, of course, helps folks around here as well. So I'm looking forward to this.
And I, I think we all are, are very, very appreciative of our relationship with CBCC. My daughter's, my daughter's picture's on the wall out there as one of the graduates of the first class of Alexander Early College. Would've saved me a lot of money on college if she hadn't changed her major. You know, considering she graduated high school with an associate's degree. But she did change her major, and so Dad didn't get as big a break as I would like, but. But it was, it was, I was in Early College was, was definitely a benefit to my oldest daughter, who it only took three years to do the last two of her bachelor's degree. So we do appreciate you guys. Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the multi-campus funding for CBCC Alexander Center resolution as written.
Second.
If there, well, actually, we already did that. If there's no other, no further discussion or questions, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Sorry about that. I'm not used to this big audience. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. And we do appreciate what you do for our community and our county. Next item on the agenda is a downtown Taylorsville Historic District announcement. I would recognize Connie Kincaid, Business Development Manager with our Economic Development Department.
Thank you, Commissioner Lael. County Commissioners, Mr. Herms, Ms. Starnes, thank you for allowing me to represent the Historic Preservation Commission, many of whom are in the audience tonight. The intergovernmental agreement between Alexander County and the town of Taylorsville to administer historic preservation efforts enabled the formation of the Downtown Taylorsville Historic District. Originally a Scottish settlement, Alexander County was established from Iredale, Wilkes, and Caldwell Counties in eighteen forty-seven. Taylorsville was named the county seat and later incorporated in eighteen fifty-one. The Downtown Taylorsville Historic District was placed on the National Register of Historic Places on August sixth of two thousand and twenty-four. The National Register District encompasses ten acres or approximately seven blocks to the northeast of the Alexander County Courthouse. There are thirty-three properties with twenty-seven contributing and six non-contributing buildings, consisting of more than a hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet of commercial and residential space, with an assessed tax value of more than seven point two million dollars. The oldest building in the district is the Neo-Gothic Revival Style Building, constructed in nineteen oh six to house the Methodist Episcopal Congregation. The nineteen seventy Alexander County Courthouse is the youngest building in the district. The district was eligible for the National Register based on Criterion A Commerce and Criterion C Architecture. The development of commercial buildings began in earnest in nineteen ten. The nineteen nineteen Northwestern Bank Building is in the process of being rehabilitated for commercial and residential use, thanks to federal and state grant funding. The nineteen twenty building next door on the corner has the original cast-iron frame, although the street-level storefront has been dramatically altered. The most architecturally distinctive building in the district is the nineteen twenty-four Hotel Campbell, locally known as Hotel Alexandria. The three-story brick building is a notable architectural landmark, with the upper floors largely intact. The hotel service station was built across the street in the nineteen twenties. In nineteen thirty-eight, John Watts took over operation with his wife, Epsy, serving as the firm's bookkeeper. Following John's death, she became an agent for the Pure Oil Company. Epsy Watts was the first female oil jobber in the state of North Carolina. The Pure Oil Station was built in nineteen forty. The two-story brick nineteen thirteen Alexander County Jail was the second jail constructed in the county, replacing a frame structure built in eighteen forty-eight. In nineteen thirty, the building was enlarged. The original nineteen thirty jail cells and locking mechanisms remain intact. Congratulations. The Nor, the Downtown Taylorsville Historic District is the first National Register District in Alexander County. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Cool stuff.
Pardon?
Cool stuff.
Yes, thank you. Thank the Historic Preservation Commission that you appointed. Please stand if you're on the Historic Preservation Commission.
If you're on the Historic Preservation Committee, would you put, yeah, I'll say, I know a few. The, I do know these folks have, these folks put in quite a bit of time.
They have worked very hard.
Quite a bit of effort and probably don't get many great job, thank you, good, you know, and rounds of applause. But we do appreciate very much what you've done and what you're doing. And I'll say, I think there's a little celebration scheduled.
On the nineteenth?
On the nineteenth, that I have on my calendar.
Good.
So we do appreciate it and I'll say, I learned some things. I didn't know, I, I didn't know all, you know, I learned some stuff.
Every day is a learning experience.
That's true.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendment number twelve. I would recognize County Manager Todd Herms.
Yes, Commissioners, before you is a budget amendment in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight dollars. It's for to maintain operational security in the public works functions. Instead of doing a line-on transfer, we've come to you tonight for this budget amendment, hoping we won't have to do anymore in this area throughout the year.
Alrighty. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendment number twelve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is our, gentlemen, is the consent agenda. We were given that information prior to the meeting, and you have had an opportunity to review and go through that information. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the item mentioned earlier?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into our Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. You guys are welcome to stay. But if you would like to, let's see, today's Monday. If you'd like to make it home in time to watch football, now would be a good opportunity for you to sneak out. And we'll give you just, just a couple of minutes to do that before we move into our Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. Disrespectful, may I interrupt you? Oh, no, sir, no problem. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. How, what are you doing here? Thanks for coming. I have to watch what I say. Thanks, guys. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you, bud.
All right. Next, like I mentioned, next item on the agenda, we will move into our Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. Madam Secretary or Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment pertaining to human services? We do not, so we will move forward. At this time, I would recognize Billy Walker, Health Director for our Public Health Report. Ms. Walker.
Good evening. We'll do a quick update for public health and then let everybody else come and do their updates.
Ms. Walker, if you want to wait just a second, we'll close the, close the door so everyone can hear. Whenever you're ready.
We're gonna do a quick public health update tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna let Emily do the communicable disease update for you. I'm gonna begin with organizational updates. Since we turned this in, we actually do have one more that's not listed. So the environmental health intern, we actually did close that out. That was just a summer intern position, so it ended in August. We still have the school-based dental coordinator position, and we're doing interviews currently. And we just posted an L C S W position for our behavioral health program. The accreditation update, we are up to date with all of our benchmarks, except the Board of County Commissioners minutes that we get from the clerk of the board. And we typically get those at the end of the year. It's just better that we get those from, from her, and then we submit those. Environmental Health have a couple that we still need. And March first of twenty twenty-six will be our ninety-day notification. So we're looking good at this point. Situational reports, tonight's our annual C D report for twenty twenty-four. This is a year behind, so it'll be for the year of twenty twenty-three. And I'm gonna let Emily do this update for you.
Hello. Okay, so I'm gonna quickly go through our communicable disease update. Communicable diseases are defined as illnesses that are dangerous to the public's health, caused by bacteria, viruses, parasites, protozoa. They can be spread from one person to another, from animal to person, can be spread through direct contact, breathing in airborne viruses and bacteria, or contact with blood and other body fluids. The Health Department's role, we investigate the circumstances to see if there are true cases. We determine if there's any control measures that need to be applied. We determine if there's any outbreaks, and then we complete our reports and send them in through N C Ed's, which is a state portal, to send them to the state to be closed out. The Health Department's, like, number one focus is prevention and control of these communicable diseases. Early detection and investigation of the communicable diseases aids in determining the source of the spread of illness and allows the Health Department to implement control measures to prevent further spread. In front of you, you'll see a, a graph that just kind of goes over the cases that we had in twenty twenty-three and how many of each case we had. The number of chlamydia cases remained the same last year, and then our gonorrhea cases increased only slightly. We did have an increase in our E. coli cases. We had seven last year. Other than a set of siblings, there was no link to any, you know, restaurants or anything like that. This is our five-year prevalence. Of the eighty-two reportable communicable diseases in North Carolina, chlamydia and gonorrhea remain the most prevalent in North Carolina and in Alexander County. And then Salmonella is our most reported foodborne C D. We do education in the schools, our social media outlets. We have a Health Department website, we have Facebook. We also have an electric sign out front where we'll put important information. We also educate through our clinics and at community events. And last year, May eleventh, our COVID public health emergency ended. So we no longer have to report individual cases. We do still investigate if there are outbreaks in our congregate living settings, which is jails, long-term care facilities, and if any control measures need to be implemented there. While MPOCs continues to be reported in North Carolina, Alexander County to date has had no cases of MPOCs. The new flu that's circulating is the H five N one bird flu. It was identified in U S dairy cattle since March of this year. We did have one herd in North Carolina, none in Alexander County, and there's been no human transmission in North Carolina. Surveillance and preparation for management is still going on by the Department of Ag and Department of Public Health if cases would spike. And then every flu season, which is approaching us quickly, we recommend that everybody six months in age, of age and older, gets a flu vaccine. We will have all flu vaccine for all ages, six months and up, and also for the, the high dose for the sixty-five and older. And we are planning our drive-through clinics for Fridays in October.
And I added that we're doing the community events. Of course, August is already gone, but we were pretty busy in August with all the schools getting back in session. September and October, we're busy doing lots of events as well. Just getting out in the community and updating and doing education, so. And that's all we have. Any questions? Well, thank you for letting us come.
Thank you. I'm always taken back by the communicable diseases information. I hate to be that way, but I am. So, thank you very much. Next. As I say, Senior Center Report, David Moose, Consolidated Human Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There we go. All right, so I'm bringing the Senior Center update to you on behalf of our Senior Center Director, Kristi Hunt. She is in Greensboro for training for SHIP. So she asked me to present that. She is in Greensboro for training for SHIP, so she asked me to present that for her tonight. The bingo and birthday lunches, they continue to be a big hit. They fill up every month. Seniors enjoy those very much, very much look forward to. The Senior Center is continuing to offer evidence-based classes, such as A Matter of Balance and Tai Chi. I know those are very popular as well. They are continuing their Musicians Jam. It's now live on YouTube every Monday morning at 10:00. And they also hosted a special evening music event on the 25th of June from 6:00 until 8:00. I know Kristi categorized that as a multi-generational event, brought out a lot of people. 124 people, as a matter of fact, attended that or viewed it live. Huge hit, and they supplied refreshments that were very much appreciated. They also hosted another music event, evening event, on September 3rd, since the first one was such a huge hit, and I imagine that those will continue. Cardio drumming, I don't know if you've heard of cardio drumming, but that is a new program that's being offered at the Senior Center. I was privileged to be able to witness that the other day. Pretty popular, pretty full, but basically, they use exercise balls sitting on top of round tubs and then drumsticks, and then they hit the balls and they hit the, the containers and do it to instructor-led class on Tuesdays and Thursdays, either video-led or in-person. It's a great way to exercise, improve cardiovascular health, lower blood pressure, and reduce stress and anxiety, and the seniors also think it's a great time just playing fun. The Ice Cream Social and Grandparents' Day was held on August 15th, Bethlehem, and August 16th at Tows, also big hits. The Greens and Robin Lefon with Teaville Scoops helped sponsor the event, and that was a good event to bring grandparents and others together to enjoy some ice cream. Everybody loves ice cream. The Senior Center will also host a health fair on September 20th from 10:00 until 12:00, 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. That will be located at East Taylorsville Baptist Church. They have all kinds of health-related vendors coming to that event that will be sharing good information for seniors and others, and there will also be door prizes and refreshments, and the Health Department is going to offer flu shots at the event. The ARPA Congregate Nutrition Funds, the Senior Center was very blessed to have received some grant funds to provide extra meals for seniors. They were excited about and thankful to the Western People and Council of Governments and the caterers who helped make that happen. Crossroads Grill, Richter Scale Catering, Honey Baked Ham, Little Caesar's, and Chick-fil-A all help prepare the food and also are planning to take groups out to local restaurants to enjoy free meal provided by these funds. Also held a volunteer brunch on June 28th. That's a good time to recognize all the volunteers and show them how much we appreciate them. I can tell you from experience that without the volunteers, the center would not run as efficiently as it does. But the staff do a great job, but they, they do tremendously rely on those volunteers. Had 40 in attendance for that. Some upcoming things, Diamond Tours trips. The Senior Center offers overnight trips through Diamond Tours Company. Any age can go on these, it's not just for seniors, anyone is welcome to go. The remaining trips for this year include the Myrtle Beach Holiday Show trip from December 2nd through the 6th, and information is on the Senior Center website, and encourage everyone to sign up for those. They also do day trips. Those are being ongoing and will continue to go on well into the fall. Those are a huge hit, zoo trips and, and other places that the seniors enjoy. We also have a Red Cross Blood Drive coming up that is being hosted with, and is an event, drive, event with Lee Masonic Lodge on Friday, September 13th, 2:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m., so stop by for that. The Med Assist Mobile Free Pharmacy, the Senior Center wants to again be a part of the Mobile Free Pharmacy program and will be assisting anyone that would like to register through the event. I also have a table set at the event to provide information and resources. That occurs on September 14th from 9:00 until 2:00 at First United Methodist Church. Medicare Open Enrollment is October 15th through December 7th. It's a great time to review plans and choose what you want for next year. Currently accepting renewal forms now and continue to assist new-to-Medicare beneficiaries and those who have questions or issues with their current plan year-round. Medicare Open Enrollment Carnival, there's a Medicare Open, excuse me, it was already held, Medicare Opening Enrollment Kickoff Carnival Friday, September 6th, and had a very good turnout for that. Here's some data as far as 2023 to 2024 savings. January to December of '23 had a savings of $1,316,652 and 1,122 contacts. On target so far this year, January to July, had a savings of $153,603 and 226 contacts. And then participation, participation is definitely up, about a 53% increase from last year. The average daily attendance from May to July of '23 was 62.5, and May to July of 2024 was 96. So, a lot of, a good participation at the Senior Center. And I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I was just going to say, my mom's doing Tai Chi at the Bethlehem Senior Center once a week, and, which I think's very interesting.
Yeah.
But really enjoys it, and, and I want to take this opportunity, we were talking about the Senior Center, to say thank you to the Board of Elections. And that may sound crazy for those of you that don't know what was going on, but the election in November was slated to be held at the Senior Center, and it was going to interfere with Senior Center operations for 19 days or so, you know, for a significant amount of time, and that concerned a significant population of the folks that use the Senior Center, and the Board of Elections was kind enough to ask Raleigh if, you know, ask Raleigh for the venue to be changed, which has been changed to actually the CBCC Applied Technologies Center across the street right here. And that made a lot of folks happy. And just want to say, we appreciate the Board of Elections and their willingness to, to make that change, because that's very appreciated.
Yeah, I know, I know everyone involved in that conversation understood the vital role that the Senior Center played, and so I'm thankful that a good resolution came about and all that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, I would recognize, and I think this may be our first DSS report from our new DSS Director, Carrie Jarrell. So, Mr. El, recognize you.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Carrie Jarrell, and I'm your new DSS Director. I would just like to give a few brief updates from the department. Our vacancy rate right now is 13% for the past month. We are still in search of highly qualified candidates. Across the county, well, actually, across the state, all DSSs are searching for qualified candidates. So, we're no different than the other DSSs. Workforce development. We are taking steps to reduce our turnover rates. We have reclassified some positions. We've also merged some positions where we could merge positions. We are looking, well, we have started redistributing a lot of caseloads from our child welfare social workers as well. Our CPS and APS stats for foster care, we now have, it's 57 children in custody. We brought one into care over the weekend. We have 16 children in links, four children in the 18- to 21-year-old program. We have 15 foster homes in Alexander County. We have not had any adoptions. We have 12 wards in our APS. We, for economic services, since February, we have hired Laney Hammer for Family and Children Medicaid, Sydney Steele, Adult Medicaid, Crystal Kirby, Food and Nutrition, part-time, no benefits, Denise Jones, Adult Medicaid, part-time, no benefits, Ashley Quaylar, who is now an in-home social worker with Child Welfare, Maria Pardue, Adult Medicaid, Tiffany Ball, Adult Medicaid, Shelley Herndon, Adult Medicaid, Mary Johnson, Adult Medicaid Lead Worker. Mary Johnson actually left, and she came back to us. She left for about, almost a year, but she did come back. CPS, Carlson Wilkins, he is an investigator. Nick Bowman is our on-call investigator after hours. Fabian Hughes, our in-home social worker. Ashley Rowe, our supervisor for investigations. Rose Gresham, our social work assistant. Kristi Miller, who is now our adoption supervisor. And Kalen Overcash is our accounting specialist in our business department. Do you have any questions for me?
Can I also, can you get anything, can you get anything done for not, I'll say, I know with turnover is just higher, higher, you know, trying to find somebody to hire, trying to find somebody to hire, and then that obviously takes a toll on how efficient things can be and how much can get done, but...
But we appreciate you all for being understanding.
Thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is closed session. So, per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 45 and 6, we will go into closed session for economic development, contractual, and personnel purposes. We will reconvene for the purpose of adjournment only. So, at this time, we will take a brief recess, and we will reconvene in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and good evening.